Okay, then why don't we go ahead and start the meeting. Calling to order the meeting for Diamond Lake School District Board of Education 76, roll call please.
Armenta Hale.
Here.
Hauptman.
Here.
Candela.
Here.
Juan, here. Lozada.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Great. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now move on to the public comment section. So we open the floor to public comments on agenda items only. If you have a public comment, please feel free to put that in the Q and A right now and we will read those out loud. We'll give a couple of minutes or a minute or so. Okay, I'm not seeing any public comments, Eric, are you?
No, there are none.
Okay. And then there being no public comments on agenda items, we will move on to presentations.
Right, thank you. We have two presentations this evening. One is going to be a slideshow presentation. And the first one is from Mr. Preble, who is the principal of West Oak Intermediate School, but also serves as the extended learning coordinator. So he's going to give an update of what we did this past summer. Kind of some changes, some transitions to respond to our current situation and then the outcomes. So Mr. Preble, I'm going to hand it over to you and I believe you're sharing your screen.
Yes, I'm going to try. Thank you, Dr. Sherman Lewis. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to attempt to share my screen and having not done it on this device yet, I'm not sure if it's going to surprise me with anything. Sorry for the delay, excuse me, one second.
Sure, I could do if you want.
Yeah, it's running me through a whole set. You want, do you mind, Eric?
Not a problem.
I apologize for that.
All right.
All right. So basically tonight, I just wanted to share the summer learning executive summary, which basically entails what our goals were for summer learning as well as what we did. As Dr. Sherman Lewis said, in response to our remote learning platform. What we may have missed during third trimester and getting students, keeping them engaged and getting them ready as much as possible for the fall. So our three goals of summer learning were curriculum-based instruction, live instruction and high percentage of and consistent attendance. And what I mean by curriculum-based instruction is that the summer school content was based exactly on that. Our curriculum roadmaps that we work on during the school year. When we first spoke about summer learning at a board meeting earlier in the spring, we talked about how, you know, there was priority standards and skills that may have been missed during third trimester due to the stay-at-home order and the way we went about our remote learning. So we wanted to make sure we captured those as best as possible and give children opportunity to have those skills and standards presented to them so that they could learn them. The other thing that we wanted to incorporate was increased live instruction. I think that as we moved through the spring last year, we got better and better each week and more engaging, but we knew that in order to keep kids engaged, we needed more live instruction. So we did that. And as the slides go on, I will, I'll talk a little bit more about that. And then the last piece there was the high percentage of and consistent attendance. We knew that during the springtime, we struggled with getting kids to connect online. We were struggling with families and like everything else, we got better and better as the spring rolled on, but we wanted to make sure that we were very deliberate in our engagement and our connection. Getting kids involved and keeping them involved through the six weeks of the summer learning program. I think you're going to see that we did that as we move on. Next slide, Eric, thank you. So the first, the first goal, our curriculum-based instruction. We wanted to focus on those priority standards as I was talking about, not covered during third trimester. And we wanted instruction based on our roadmaps. In the, in the past, we utilized a program for summer learning that was, was very reading focused and it was, it was good content. It was very new content to our kids. It wasn't necessarily aligned with our curriculum at times. But it was engaging for the kids, but we felt it was more important since we, we missed those weeks in the spring to really dive into the things that we should have been able to get to in a normal situation. The other piece that we cover was that for our students with IEPs, we wanted to make sure that those goals that we were hitting during the school year, whether it was in person or remote, continued on in the spring. And we worked to continue that model where we worked with families to facilitate IEP goals as best as we could through an online format, knowing that not everything is, is fully functional when we're not together in person. So we, so we worked with our families and our special department to deliver instruction in those goal areas as best as we could. The second bullet point there talks about utilizing those forward planning documents. So our staff across the district did an awesome job in the spring. Connecting those missed standards and skills with, from the third trimester with the first trimester skills and trying to blend them together to, to work on a way to catch up. And those documents are what drove the summer learning instruction. And we were very successful across the board. You know, we had our struggles, not, not everything ran perfectly. I'm not going to, to pretend that for a second, but we did really well in, in utilizing this content that the teachers put together. They put together a, a document that listed skills, listed standards, but also listed online or not necessarily just online activities, but activities that we could do online, whether they were digital or you could do them with manipulatives or things that students would have at the home. Things that really drove home those skills. The other piece that was very important to us was we wanted this instruction delivered by teachers that were in the grade level. So if you were in third grade last year and you went to summer school, you would have your third grade teacher. We felt that was important to maintain those relationships that were built during the school year so that we would further engage students, keep them coming back and they were familiar with the, the teachers that they had throughout the year. And one of the things that I wanted to point out was how, how incredibly awesome the entire district staff was, was stepping up. Eighty percent of our positions were filled by grade-level teachers. That means eighty percent of, you know, every teacher that worked was part of that grade level. I thought that was so important, so impressive to keep that consistency throughout the six weeks of summer. We had ten percent of our positions filled by support staff. So these were still students that were familiar, or excuse me, still teachers that students were familiar with. They may not have been home and teachers, but these are teachers that they see every single day, whether they're a reading specialist or an EL resource teacher. The students knew them. And then the other, the remaining ten percent of teachers, they were still familiar faces, but they filled multiple grade levels. And this was a case in our dual language program where we had our dual language teachers teaching multiple grade levels so that we were able to deliver dual language instruction in the summer. And I just, I, I can't thank our, our staff enough for, for stepping up and really taking some ownership and, and just delivering some excellent content, great instruction and just keeping and maintaining those relationships throughout the summer. So the other piece was our ESY staff, so in our, in our special ed department, that was filled by eighty-seven and a half percent of our own staff. We traditionally do have outside staff that come in and help us out for the summer. And we had even more of our teachers step up. Now, I could give you percentages all day, but what the important thing about this is, is that we had more staff and we had more students than we've ever had in summer school before. So it wasn't like we just had the same people. We had extra people stepping up left and right. It wasn't just the usual teachers that give their time in the summer. It was almost everybody. Everybody that could lend a hand was there. It was, it was just a great thing to see. Go on to the next slide, Eric. So our second goal with live instruction is, is just that we wanted to increase the amount of live instruction. The areas that we did it in were social emotional learning, math, English and Spanish language arts. Those were the areas that we wanted to focus on and those were the areas that we picked those priority standards and skills from the spring to move forward into the summer. The other piece was, we had one and a half to two hours of live instruction every day. Now, the students were only on from eight to 10 every day. So they were, the entire time they had live instruction. The two big buzzwords now with remote learning are synchronous and asynchronous learning. And we've gone through that in, in different meetings before. We were one and a half to two hours of synchronous learning every day. Which is impressive. We were going four days a week. So we had twenty-four days of school where the majority of that time was synchronous learning. The whole point of it was student engagement. That was our goal. We knew that if we could engage them and keep them and, and doing that through live instruction, the kids would get more out of it. Next one, Eric. So we can't, we can't learn anything if we're not there, right? So student attendance, big goal for us. We want to increase the percentage of students attending. And, you know, we only had previous summer schools to, to benchmark this. Typically, when we, when we enroll students in summer school in the past, we would get about a hundred and fifty to two hundred kids to sign up and we would have about, you know, the first week, we'd probably have about seventy to eighty percent attendance, but after the, after a couple of weeks, it drops off and after the middle of it, which traditionally falls around the Fourth of July, we're well under the fifty percent mark. And again, that's with two hundred or less students. We wanted to make sure that everybody that we could get came to summer learning. It was online, so it was open to everybody. And we wanted to make sure that we held student attendance consistent. We knew full well that as the summer progressed and things started to open up in our economy and our environments, families would go on vacation, sports clubs would open up and there'd be different activities for kids to do and we understood that. We knew that we had some higher enrollment because for a little while, we were the only game in town. You know, there wasn't any baseball, there wasn't any soccer, swimming was canceled, all that stuff. So it's kind of like we had a monopoly on what are we going to do this summer? Well, I'm going to come to distance learning at, at Diamond Lake 76. So we knew that our, our original numbers were, were going to be high and we anticipated some drop-off. There, I'll show a slide in a moment that shows some of these numbers in the graphic, but you know, we didn't slide that much as far as attendance. We, we stayed really consistent and we were pretty heavily involved the entire time. The other piece we wanted to look at was refining our attendance recording practices. In the spring, we were, we were hold harmless. You know, we didn't, we didn't track attendance. We, we tracked attendance internally, but the state was, you know, it wasn't a mandatory thing. Grades were not a mandatory thing. And we felt that that, you know, obviously hurt our engagement a little bit. So we wanted to make sure that, okay, let's, let's imagine that attendance was mandatory or however we're going to look at it. How are we going to record it accurately? So we, we played around with some things and we, we developed a system for attendance taking that will actually help us roll into what we're going to do this fall. So all these things that we did in these three goal areas actually helped us shape what we're going to be doing for remote learning this fall. It was a little, you know, kind of, kind of equivalent to, to what the space program does or what the military does. They test things out and the next thing you know, they're on the private market. That's what we did with summer school. We tested some things out and now they're part of the product that we're going to put out this fall. Not everything, but it's, we definitely gave some things a trial run. Learned what worked and what didn't. And we were able to build on things we did in the spring. We took what we were successful with, we added to it and we did some trial and error in the summer with it and then we're going to go forward in the fall with it. Next slide, Eric. All right. So just at a glance and thank you, Mr. Hanson, for, for putting this together. It just basically everything I just talked about, but makes it look a lot prettier. But the, the first things I want to, the first chart I want to focus on is the pie chart in the lower left-hand corner with the curriculum document completion. So this was the amount of those planning forward documents that were completed within our six-week time period. The goal was never to get through all of them, but what makes this interesting is if you look at it, we had a large number of our grade levels got through seventy-five to a hundred percent of those documents. In six weeks, they got through those priority standards during summer school. So if I'm doing the math correctly, thirty-seven, thirty-seven gets us to seventy-four percent. Seventy-four percent of our grade levels got at least seventy-five percent of the documents completed. What I found in the lower percentages, so where we had, we had seven percent of our, our grade levels got through twenty-five percent. Those were our younger kids, our kindergartners and things like that. So we, we understand that there were some challenges there to get through that amount of material online. And it makes sense because it's, it's a different approach and a different animal for the younger you get. But also our ESY students fell into that percentage completion too. So where, where I got some of that feedback was from like our kindergarten, first grade and our ESY kiddos. So we take that and we say, okay, we can work with those types of numbers and that type of feedback for this fall and, you know, address some things that we do at any grade level. Maybe we can put more into and the high, more into the, to the documents in the higher grade levels because we're able to complete them all. And maybe we have to change it up a little bit at the younger grade levels due to the fact that we couldn't get through all of it in six weeks. The other two graphs are just showing our attendance. And the first one on top is just your average percentage of attendance every week. And the thing that I'm most proud of is that we held over fifty percent attendance the entire time. Which I don't know if we've ever done, I can't say we've never done that before because I, I haven't been around long enough and looked at attendance numbers in, in summer school long enough to, to know that, but I know it's, that was pretty awesome compared to what I know we've done in the past. And obviously part of that is we cornered the market on, you know, what we're doing this summer because there wasn't a lot going on. But I also want to say that it has a lot to do with the engagement of our students and our families buying into this thing. And because our, our staff bought into this and delivered some just really great instruction over the summer. And then just to break it down to a more granular level, the daily attendance percentage, that's every day that we're in the in summer school and it's just by date. And really the interesting thing that, the reason I chose this was because if you look at the dates and you get to July fourth, which actually isn't on there, but between July first and sixth, you see a dip around July fourth. Now traditionally, that dip stays there or keeps going down. But look at it bounce back and it stays relatively consistent every day all the way through. That's because as a community, our families, our students, our teachers, they were all in this thing together and I can't, I can't thank everybody enough for their participation in this. So next slide, we'll just get into wrapping up some of this. So due to the, do the whole harmless approach, we did not do assessments during our, our summer learning. What we wanted to make sure was that we were number one, keeping those relationships going, we're delivering curriculum, we had attendance. We wanted that first. So what we're going to do is we're going to, when we, when we take our fall benchmarks in October, and I think Dr. Girac will talk a bit more about this later. When we, when we do our fall benchmarks, we'll go back and compare them to our winter benchmarks from last year. Now that seems like a long time away, but realistically, that's the last benchmark that we had for all of our students. There was some progress monitoring for some of our kiddos that we got a February data point in there. But the last time we benchmarked everybody was during our winter benchmarks last school year. So we'll compare that and see what kind of either slide, plateau, or even advancement we may see. I'm excited to see that data. But we'll, we'll analyze that and I'll report that back to you after we get all those numbers in, in October. We wanted to design the summer learning program based on the curriculum. I just have to move my, my camera here so I can see. So based on the data that we had, we, we identified students who we wanted to invite to summer learning. Now that we've done this and we kind of opened it up to everybody and we approached summer learning through our curriculum roadmaps versus an outside, like a third-party packaged curriculum that we used to do in the past. We want to go forward and design summer learning curriculum to address the needs like we did this past year. You know, hopefully we're not getting sent home. Hopefully we're not missing anything over the course of this year, but now we can take that same model and see where our kids are, are missing some skills and design summer learning based on that, just like we did this year. We can tailor it more to the students more individually, more on grade level, but instead of having a canned curriculum that was engaging for kids, nothing wrong with it, but I think we found that this is going to be a much more productive way of, of running a summer curriculum. All right, one more slide, Eric, I think. So just to conclude and, and some acknowledgements, acknowledgements in here. Along the bottom of the next two slides are just some examples of student work and students working that, that we picked up over the summer, but we wanted to provide additional opportunities for students to catch up on those missed skills and standards. And I think we can, I can, I think we can seriously check that box off. I think we did that very well. We may not have had everything done, but I think we really
That pink water bottle.
We really did hit the mark on that. We also based it on our actual curriculum roadmaps. This was our curriculum. This wasn't anybody else's that we purchased. This is the stuff that we would teach our students every single day for the course of the year and it was more authentic to do it that way. Depending on where we're at next year and using this model, we can do this in person or remote. It doesn't matter. So when we get to, when we get to, you know, end of May next year and we have to make a decision on which way summer school is going to be run, it doesn't matter. I think with this model, we're flexible enough that we can do it. You know, I hopefully we're not remote at that point, but if we would be, we could do it very easily. But if we're in person, we could even do it better. So it's, it's, it's designed to be flexible so we can go with both approaches. But the, the one thing I would change going forward, now that we're, there, we're more into delivering actual curriculum and we want to measure some things is I would put those pre and post program assessments in place like we've done in the past, for sure. It's just, we, we didn't feel at this time that that was the, the best thing to do, that was the best practice. We probably could have done it, but then again, we were still managing with environments and things of that. And how do we deliver assessments that are going to give us valid data? So we were still working on that at that time. So that's going forward, that is something we'll definitely do. One more, Eric. And I think we're at the last one. Yeah, and I just, this particular slide is just me thanking everybody. And I wanted to, I wanted to put this in here because I wanted all of you as a board and everybody watching to understand and acknowledge how much everybody played a role in this. So to the board, I thank you for giving myself and our students and our families this opportunity to actually be able to put on a summer learning program. I know a lot of districts didn't do it. And it's not a competition, but we did it and I think we did it really well. And we wouldn't have been able to do it if you did not give me the support and our staff the support to do that. So thank you very much. District leadership team, you know, every week we talked, we, we figured out how are we going to do this? Thank you so much. We couldn't have done this without everybody on that team. Everybody played a part. I said it before and I'll say it again, our entire district staff stepped up. Whether they taught or not, everybody played a part in those planning forward documents. Everybody had a piece of that. So whether they actually taught summer school or not, the success of summer school has to do with every single staff member in our district and I, and I'm so very proud of them. And everybody who actually taught summer school, great job, way to stay with it. We were all exhausted by the time, you know, May got there because we didn't know what this was going to be. And you stuck with it, you kept building those relationships. So thank you very much. And I can't thank Sammy, Nez and Brittany enough for all the work they did up front in the office. We had a list of students that we invited to summer school and then they got on the horn and they called everybody else in the district. That's how we got the numbers. It was the three of them together and the help of all the principals and, and all the staff, just getting kids signed up. Again, everyone involved to help coordinate the, the student material pickup. That was a big day. That was a big day. And I know that our little kids benefited from having tangible materials in their hands. Our older kids were mostly online, but the littles, they needed some stuff. They needed some stuff to, to feel and page through. And we couldn't have done that without everybody that helped put those things together and pass them out and, and work that pickup day. And a special thank you to Laura Rogers and Casey Lethal for their day-to-day coordination of the program. They, they did a great job keeping everybody informed of what needed to happen, the day-to-day operation of attendance and any type of resources needed. They were there every day, all day. So everybody on this page, everybody on this call, thank you very much. I'm going to stop talking now so the board meeting gets over sometime before next week. But thank you again. And if anybody has any questions, I'm, I'm here.
I have a question. You spoke about measuring student attendance and participation differently than we did in the spring. Can you talk a little bit more about that? How did you capture attendance and did you find that that was more helpful?
Yeah, so you know, it was interestingly enough, from day one in summer school, we made sure that our staff was taking the attendance. Which may or may not have been the case when we, when we went home on March thirteenth. You know, it was just, it was more of a, oh, that's what I'm looking for. It was more of a specific way that we took attendance. So everybody had an attendance sheet, everybody recorded it. We actually kept track of it. We had a shared folder between Laura and Casey and myself. Tracking attendance, making phone calls if kids weren't showing up. But it was just more of a deliberate approach to make sure that we were tracking all of our students that were enrolled. We also, we kept live the students' ability to put their attendance in. So we did that in the spring too, where if you went into your Google classroom and you logged in, you would take, you know, if I'm a student, I would say that I'm here and that would mark them. And what we noticed is that that's not always accurate. So we, we made sure that the staff was taking the attendance. We actually compared that. And as we were going through the summer, you saw where our attendance was in the, is the high fifties and mid-sixty percentile. When students would record it themselves, it was like in the thirtieth percentile. So we, we knew that we had to, as the adults, make sure that we were taking the attendance.
So then is it just taken one time? Just, you know, let's just say like at the beginning of the morning or is it taken, you know, at the middle school level, if they're taking different classes, is it captured at every class?
We took, we took attendance once in the morning. So the way, the way summer school was set up was you had an SCL block. Then you had a math or a literacy block. And depending on if you were in dual language or not, the order of that may have been different. But as you went into those meetings, the teachers would take that, take that role. So there's, there's elements of that that work really well and elements that, that don't. So that, you know, we're working on what the best way to do that is for the, for the fall coming up. And obviously, to your point, the middle school attendance may look a little bit differently than, than the intermediate and the primary building, but what we did notice is that the staff has to take attendance. We can record that right in Power School and once we develop a pattern of who's not there, who's maybe showing up and then dropping, we can, we can adjust to that and make our phone calls and, and contact families and have those conversations.
Principal Preble, I certainly want to congratulate you and the team. An incredible program and, I mean, some of the information that you shared with us and being able to even maintain fifty percent or slightly above that consistently throughout the summer, that's, that's in itself. You know, mentioning and highlighting. You talked a little bit about the, how hard it was to assess the success here, the improvements and whatnot. So first part of the question is what, how do, how, how do you measure? What can you tell us about what you saw that gave you the sense that, yes, it's, it's making a difference with your students? And then take that forward and do you have any ideas on how you're going to? And do you have any ideas on how you're going to, what kind of assessments you're going to do in the first semester of the fall?
Sure, absolutely. Well, the the difficult part about the assessment wasn't so much that it was, I shouldn't say it was difficult. It's just that we we chose not to assess because of, we weren't sure at the time how we were going to be able to deliver a quality assessment that gave us valid data. Keep in mind that at the time, we're thinking, okay, if I, if I provide an assessment online and I have a student who's maybe in an environment that, you know, somebody might be very distracted or they can't quite focus, is that the best environment to give them an assessment? Am I really going to be able to find out what they've learned? At the same time, is it, you know, and we joke about this, but I'm going to say it anyway, is, is, you know, is the older brother or sister helping them out with it? Because we can't tell, you know, we'd so, you know, we, all of a sudden, we have, we have students who are really struggling, we have students that are off the charts successful, but is that a true measure? We're working with our, our people at Renaissance and our STAR assessment to administer an online assessment. That'll be our fall benchmark. So going forward, what I would do is I would utilize that. We have benchmarking capability within Renaissance STAR, so those will be the thing, that would be the model that I would use going forward next year.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. All right. Well, again, thank you for allowing me to run the program this year, and I look forward to working this year to improve on it for next summer.
If I can just add, Mr. Preble worked last year and throughout the year with Mr. Williford, who was a summer school coordinator, extended learning coordinator for the past four years. And he transitioned knowing that he was going to take over the traditional summer school model that we've always done, or the extended learning model. So, Mr. Preble, congratulations to you for thinking outside of the box, being creative, being proactive, recruiting the staff, recruiting the students, and working so well with the leadership team. I just want to commend you for all that you did and how loyal and professional you always are. So thank you.
Well, thank you. You make it easy.
And happy birthday.
Thank you.
Is it 22 or 23?
Put them together, and you're there. The answer is yes.
So I guess.
All right, and our second presentation is a little bit different. As you all know, because of the changes in how we are delivering and providing schooling and education, we have added on and modified our calendar. So we initially always have two back-to-school Teacher Institute days to get ready for the school year. But in addition to that, this year, we requested, and you generously granted us, two additional remote learning planning days. So we have four days to prepare for the way school will look like and start for the first semester in District 76. So Dr. Draca has been coordinating and leading the efforts of working with the leadership team, as well as the staff that you will see, of putting together what the back-to-school activities look like, not only for getting schools ready and the operational logistics of things, but then also professional development and best practices in remote learning, as well as an opportunity for staff to have personal connections with students and their families. So I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Draca, who's going to walk through our back-to-school institute and readiness activities.
All right, thank you, Dr. Sharma Lewis. Eric, I'll go ahead and share my screen, correct?
Yep.
All righty, so I'll, I'll assume then that all of you can see the agenda that I'm looking at. So I'll just walk through the days that, or the actions that'll take place this week. We started yesterday with building-level principals leading their buildings through an overview of the Readiness Institute in typical fashion, required to go through the teacher evaluation plan. And then they embraced their building safety plans and procedures. And then, as Mr. Preble had mentioned, they started to dig into, or they were preparing or giving them an overview of our September planning forward process. And I'll talk about that a little bit more. We discussed a little bit about the instructional coaching model with our new instructional coaches. And then principals went over building-level specifics and logistics. Then yesterday afternoon, the grade-level teams met. And so each team, each grade level met with the grade level below and above them to cover the planning forward documents that Mr. Preble had mentioned earlier. Back in the spring and April and May, with the anticipation of knowing that we would need to address some of the potential learning gaps that existed because of school closures, we, we put together teams that designed a curriculum that prioritized the standards that were missed in third trimester, just as Mr. Preble had mentioned. So yesterday, teams had an opportunity to meet with those grade levels above and below, share resources, share their planning forward documents, and have conversations about instructional practice. Then today was super cool. We, we had our best practices in Remote Learning Institute. And so what we did, and I'll scroll down here to the bottom, this isn't part of the agenda, but I'm sharing this with you. Today, what we did was we had 50-minute courses that were conducted that focused on best practices in remote learning. The district leadership team developed a document which outlines those best practices. And our teachers and our new instructional coaches designed courses that were offered virtually to all of our staff members. So you can see, at the 8 o'clock hour, there were three course offerings, session, and all the course offerings in the left-hand column are required. So they were all required to take certain courses related to the rules of engagement, online learning, asynchronous and synchronous learning platforms. But then in addition to that, we had just a ton of teachers reach out to offer some really fun and exciting courses that, that were directly related to best practices in remote learning. So as you can see, every hour on the hour, we had additional courses take place. In total, we had nine separate course offerings that took place over the six hours today. And so like I said, teachers were required to take three of them specifically, and then had three choice options that might be more specifically related to their roles and their jobs. So it was a really cool day, had an opportunity to see many of the sessions as well, as well as the DLT did as, as well. We were able to jump into each one of these virtual sessions, get an opportunity to see what was taking place, a lot of really engaging activities. I would say our presenters certainly led by example in that they were not only teaching about best practices in remote learning, but also exemplifying those practices as well. So it was a fun day. It was neat to see our teachers answer the call and to, to present on some really fun and exciting remote learning opportunities that will, that will improve in student engagement, help teachers understand their roles and responsibilities in terms of designing online classrooms and how to best implement synchronous and asynchronous learning. So that was our day today. Then moving on to tomorrow, the teachers and the building-level administration will spend time planning and preparing for our meet-and-greet orientations, which will take place Friday. And so tomorrow morning, that will be their, their goal. Then the afternoon portion of tomorrow is where grade-level teams meet together to plan consistent curriculum based on one, the best practices in remote learning that they learned today. And then also, after having the vertical articulation, which took place on Monday, they're going to take all of that, that knowledge, that time, and those efforts to begin planning a consistent September planning forward curriculum. And so our, our idea here is that the first five weeks of school will be planning forward, which means we're addressing those, those learning gaps that may have existed in the third trimester of last year, and those with the intention that in October, sort of as you were mentioning earlier, Mr. Preble and Mr. Lozada, October will then be our first benchmark assessment. So we will have a remote learning platform, which addresses the STAR assessment that'll take place October 5th through, October 5th through the 9th. So the instructional leadership team and the, and the building-level leaders will all be meeting on September 8th to unpack that remote learning, excuse me, that remote assessment platform through STAR, make sure that we're appropriately proctoring and administering that assessment come early October. So that takes us through tomorrow. And then Thursday is predominantly building-level activities related to planning and preparation, materials, preparation and distribution, several other specifics related to buildings. And then Dr. Sharma Lewis will wrap it up with a cool presentation by, cool motivational presentation by Inky Johnson. And then when Friday comes along, you'll see that we have principals' presentations, followed by four hours of individual meet-and-greets by each grade level. And that, I think, predominantly concludes the activities that are, that are taking place this week. Any questions that I can answer for anyone? Nope.
Thank you, Dr. Draca, and thanks to the leadership team. I know it was a collaborative effort, not only by everyone that you see on screen, but a lot of people behind the scenes. I believe we had about 12 different staff presenters, as Dr. Draca shared their experiences and led by example, and were very, not only interesting, but highly engaging and motivating and very relevant to how we're going to set up teaching and learning spaces in a remote environment. So my hats off to those teachers, as well as to the leadership team for putting this all together on such short notice. Nice job, everybody. And that is all of our presentations for this evening.
Fantastic, thank you. Okay, moving on to our business agenda for the evening, we have a number of items for action. The first item on the business agenda is the Omnibus Vote Agenda. Items under the Omnibus Vote Agenda are considered routine and are non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. If anyone, board member, staff administrator, or citizen wishes to have a separate vote on any item or items, that item or items will be pulled from the Omnibus Vote Agenda and voted on separately. Be it resolved, the Diamond Lake 76 Board of Education accepts and approves the Omnibus Vote Agenda items A through E as listed. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Lozada?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Armenta?
Hail?
Yes.
Hauptman?
Yes.
Candela?
Yes.
Kwan?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to the second item, which is personnel. Be it resolved, the Diamond Lake 76 Board of Education accepts and approves the personnel items as depicted on the agenda. We have one new hire, we have four resignations, and we have two leaves of absence. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Candela?
Yes.
Hauptman?
Yes.
Armenta?
Hail?
Yes.
Kwan?
Yes.
Lozada?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to item C, which is the superintendent's contract, whereas the Board of Education has reviewed the contract proposal for the superintendent. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of Diamond Lake School District 76 approves the contract from July 1st, 2020, through July 30th, 2025, for the superintendent as presented. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Lozada?
Yes.
Hauptman?
Yes.
Armenta?
Hail?
Yes.
Candela?
Yes.
Kwan?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yeah.
Okay, congratulations, Bhavna. We look forward to having you for the next five years.
Thank you. Can I say a couple of words? Would you mind if I?
No, not at all.
All right, I prepared them, so I wouldn't be an emotional mess, but I just want to take the opportunity to give my heartfelt thanks and gratitude to the Board of Education for this amazing privilege and recognition. I'm so fortunate to work with each of you, supportive and dedicated board members who always put the needs of children at the forefront of your decisions, with my amazing, loyal, dynamic, and thoughtful leadership team, such a committed, professional, and caring staff, our amazing, eager students, and a very supportive community. I appreciate everyone's continued support, confidence, and faith in all that we're doing to continue on our journey to excellence, and I look forward to our ongoing work and partnership, and of course, continue to make District 76 sparkle on. So on behalf of my family, I want to thank you for this life-changing opportunity. Thank you so much.
You are welcome. We're very excited to continue on. So thank you. Okay, then the last item on our business agenda is the first reading of Press Issue 105. I don't know if anyone had any questions or wanted to do any discussion on this item. We will take action on it at the next meeting. So if there aren't questions or discussion tonight, you'll have until the next meeting to re-review and ask any questions before we vote. Did anyone have any questions, comments? No. Okay, well, that concludes our business agenda, and we now would move on to board discussion. Do we have any items for board discussion this evening? I do not. No. Okay. For freedom of information requests, we have none. So we will move on to notices and communications.
So there's just a few items on there, and I believe that all of you are on all the District 76 School Messenger notifications. But because we weren't able to give out our traditional back-to-school folders that we always do with district information on one side and then school-specific information on the other, we decided to do it virtually and put everything back on our website. So we did, as you can see, or and you got the link for the superintendent's back-to-school update, which had quick updates of District 76 at a glance, which was basically the back-to-school folder that has the calendar. And I'm not sure if Mr. Hanson, if you would be able to just click over to the District 76 at a glance, I'll kind of do both of them together, if that's possible. If not, I can share my screen.
I got it.
So, again, the leadership team did a great job, and Mr. Hanson, for his leadership on putting all this together and putting all of our ideas virtually on the website. But all of our communications will be in one spot throughout the year, as well as our calendars. And as updates come up, we'll update this part of the website, and it's the first thing that you'll see when you click onto the homepage. Daily schedules, which is what are the student and staff schedules, not only for the regular school day, but also for late start and early releases, all of the food service information, how to order meals, what the meals were going to be, where we can pick them up if you're not attending facilitated distance learning, if you're staying remote at home, our portrait of a graduate and portrait of a professional that we've worked on for the past five years as part of our strategic plan, as well as all of our educational programs. So everything with curriculum instruction, our summary of program, and the dual-language program, and then our one-page strategic snapshot with all of our goals and our strategies and our targets are located there. And then anything related to special education and support services can be found here, parent frequently asked questions, as well as documents, and then the guide to special education, what the process is, if parents or staff have any questions. And then Mr. Hanson will bring you this as we move on in remote learning. But he's put together a parent technology center, as well as, you know, information for staff and parents on distance learning technology guidelines. And everything that you see here is all available in English, as well as Spanish, whether if it's a separate link or all continued into one document. And then until we stay virtual, we also have all of our Board of Education meeting dates. So community members can just click on the date. So community members can just click on the date and then virtually participate in any one of the meetings as we do now. So we rolled this out last week. It'll just continue to be updated. And as updates come up, we'll just continue to email you or send out notifications through school messenger, whether that's email or text. But it's just a nice way, since we weren't able to hand out folders this year to keep everything virtual. And the schools will be doing this as well as having school information, you know, at a glance, they can click on that. And then they have kind of just the highlights from each school available for you. So we just wanted to make you aware of that, that it was a little bit of a change, but we thought it was a great way to just kind of put it all in one place. And so if parents or community members or even staff have questions, it's all available in one spot.
It looks really nice.
Yeah, that's, that's great stuff. Now, are we proactively sending out, I guess, links to it by email? Because if that would be, for example, area realtors, I think that would be something that would be phenomenal to get into their hands just so that they can give the district credit for everything that, everything that you guys are doing.
I apologize, I jumped onto it quick, but literally on our website, it's the first image you see. It has a live link right to at a glance, and it's going to be on all, it's actually on every single website as well. But yeah, we definitely could share that. I apologize for jumping in.
Oh, perfect.
And we'll just continue to keep reminding families and community, you know, that it's fair, you know, whether it's through the principal's weekly updates or just, you know, news alerts or flashes that we usually do. So we'll continue to keep that on the forefront as of our communications.
Terrific.
Thank you. And then the second or the third and last thing that we have available under notices and communications is through your generosity and support, we were able to have the addition of the community liaison position that Daisy Carrera has been facilitating and participating and leading with. So she has put together a community survey that went out about two weeks ago, and it was open for about 10 days. And I'm going to just kind of turn to Daisy to just talk through it. But we had almost 200 families that responded of items or resources that they needed support and help with. And then this Thursday and Friday, when there is the supply pickup drive, we're going to be providing other items and resources to those families as well. And I know Daisy's reaching out to each one of those families individually and saying that we've received their, you know, request and how we're going to follow up personally with them. So I'm going to turn it over to Daisy to kind of just provide a brief summary.
You're muted.
So again, yeah, thank you for the opportunity to have this position available for our students and their families. Like Dr. Sharma Lewis mentioned, we had about 190 families reach out to us. Obviously, there are multiple children within those households. And this survey, the student needs survey, has really allowed the district to care for the student needs holistically and their environment while they're at home, because we obviously see that the parents need that support as well. So, you know, as it's been mentioned, I've just been reaching out to each parent individually. This Thursday, we're working with everybody's department. This Thursday, working with our maintenance department, I know Mr. Rogers has helped you out a lot. We, and with the suggestion of Ms. Sullivan to add student desks to our survey, you know, in case parents needed that at home for the children's learning environment. That was probably the most needed item of the survey. We had 76 responses for that. So working out the logistics again with Mr. Rogers and our maintenance department. But on top of that, a lot of the parents, you know, wanted, you know, working with Mr. Hanson's department as well, with headphones for at-home learning, internet access. Again, those hotspots that we have available, school supplies. We, I did hold the school supply drive at each one of our buildings. And on Friday, working with, I've been reaching out to our families as well to, because that is kind of like an invite for the parents who did complete the survey. On top of the school supply pickups that we have, I will have that available as well for additional school supplies. Again, because our parents just need to feel supported. And it also allowed me the chance to, I guess, verbally meet some of the parents. And they thanked, they thanked us a lot, you know, for reaching out to them and just letting them know about this position. And again, kind of being that middle ground person and working with everybody's departments to be able to provide them with food, internet access, school supplies, again, and SCL support that was on the list as well. So I'll be working with our social workers and the parents who added those comments into the survey. But yeah, it's been nice meeting families and just kind of keeping that momentum for additional support for them. I know it means a lot to them. So yeah, thank you for that. And yeah, that's, that's a big project that I have going on so far.
And I'd like to just add, I think it's not just a one-time survey that we'll do. I think as obviously distance learning continues. And then we get more information as teachers and principals and staff just make more connections with students as, you know, classes resume. You know, we'll stay on top of that, we'll monitor the information and the data, and we'll just continue to reach out on a personal level of what other supports and resources we can provide.
That's outstanding. I'm really glad we're able to support our community and our students and our families like that.
Yeah, they, the parents that I did reach out to today, again, they were very grateful. And I told them I wish I could meet them in person, but, and I do talk a little, like a lot. So just having those conversations and listening to their individual needs and, you know, giving them my direct line and again, that language barrier and being able to support them and them just knowing that we have this available to them, it, it really does mean a lot. So thank you for that opportunity. And again, working with everybody's departments, everybody's been great, our technology department, maintenance, food. And again, I'm going to, you know, be working with our social workers, our principals have also helped a lot. So I know some of our teachers have already given me referrals. So I've been calling, I was great, talking to parents a lot today. Again, just giving them a little bit of my background, you know, working with our Board of Education and Dr. Sharma Lewis and just kind of how this position came about. So yeah, again, yeah, it's going to be an ongoing thing, but definitely want to keep that momentum going.
That's great. And if I can add just one more thing, if any of you have ideas or that you hear, I know you're, you know, connected to the community and if you're out and about and if you hear things that people need. And I know Daisy, you know, referred to this, but, you know, Mrs. Sullivan had an awesome idea a few weeks ago and emailed us on a Saturday afternoon as she was out shopping for school desks. And she thought, you know, what about families that aren't able to do that? And so is there any way that they could either borrow or take, you know, desks from us? So, and we came back on Monday and we were able to make that happen because we, we received a large donation earlier in the summer when we thought we would have to have, you know, we were coming back in person and needed more social distance, you know, equipment. So thank you, Mrs. Sullivan, for that. And like I said, if anybody else has any ideas or that you hear things, please share them with us.
And I have contact with Ms. Hauptman as well. So, and yeah, I'll be, I'm be communicating with her a little bit more this week too. So thank you.
And that's all we have.
Okay. It's fantastic. We will now move on to public comments and petitions on non-agenda items. Do we have any public comments on non-agenda items this evening? If we do, please type them in that Q and A chat box. Okay, I'm not seeing any comments. Eric, do you see any?
There are none.
Okay. And then we will move on to others. I see that we have e-learning.
Oh, yes, this is more of an informational item. I apologize, I didn't scroll down to that. Just an informational item that through the ROE, we have to have an e-learning plan on record. So next Tuesday, which is our next board meeting, we will hold a hearing just to publicize our e-learning plan, which we presented to you on the August 4th board meeting. And then we will put our roadmap on there as well as our facilitated distance learning guidelines. We'll make those public. If the public has any questions or comments, we'll address those at that time. If not, then later on in the meeting, the board will take action on that e-learning plan and then we'll submit it to the Regional Office of Education.
Okay, fantastic. Does anyone have anything else for others?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to say that, you know, being here, being in the district a long time, just so pleased and impressed with how everybody, how the leadership team, the administrative team, the, and all the teachers have embraced the challenges associated with distance learning and, you know, have, have, have offered a, you know, an outstanding summer school. And, and now of our, and clearly offering just a great continuing education and are preparing for a great year. I love the, the, the teacher-led curriculum that you were showing us with, with the, with the, with the outline earlier in the meeting. And this is all just great stuff. And we haven't always seen that type of engagement. And it's, it's really a credit for how engaged everybody in the, in the district is. And really nice to see, and we greatly appreciate it. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay. And if no one has anything else, then we will have a motion to adjourn the meeting. We don't have any closed session tonight. So can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Lozada?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yeah.
Armenta?
Hale? Yes.
Hauptman?
Yes.
Candela?
Yes.
Kwan?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everyone. We will see you.
Thank you.